Okay, I'm calling the Granby Planning Board meeting to order December 27th, Monday at 5:00 PM. First order of business, we have some minutes to approve.
I'll get to know November 8th unless you need this year. So, I'll call that.
Yes. The Monday, December 13th minutes, I've read, I didn't have any issues. I'll make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I understand.
Okay. Motion carries, three. Three approved, one abstains. I don't think we have any correspondence. Can you go over that I'm aware of? Nope. So, our next item on the agenda is at 5:15, continued public hearing for Alan Biergard.
Not yet?
Not yet.
You want to go over the, take care of the action items, no?
Okay.
What do we have?
Well, we have Ken and Ken. I don't know, did he send a letter to the Select Board's decision on the food truck? You know? Did you sign it or did it say?
Yeah, I believe that, yeah, I believe they've got that. I signed it.
Okay, like Kathy, I was scheduled to public hearing for AJ, so that's got to be done. And you were contacting Chris about PDPC contract and other move forward, that's done.
Yeah.
Ken put together all my, an article changes to discuss the board to review with separate articles. Had October 25th, he, shall we put January something?
Yeah, let's move it out.
Okay, probably the second, one in January. And from what I understand, there's only one annual meeting, or not annual meeting, but one meeting, town meeting next year. Anyway, that's it, work as it sounds right now.
Okay. Don't they have one in June or July?
September, usually when they do the other one.
For the budgets, right?
Well, May is when all the elections are. Because they had a town meeting, and, annual elections in April, town meeting. Contact Kathy Leonard regarding site plans for the plan, that was way back in August, and I'm sure it's done. And we all had to sign, we and ours, back in August, that was done, and we are done. Right too quickly, I should have spoken sooner.
So, anybody else have any discussion, anything they want to bring up?
We don't have any issues with any states and counties.
What, we've got a public hearing, first meeting in January.
That's a 4-1-3 or 3-1-4?
It's for the dumpsters.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yep.
The meeting's January 2nd, so... Yeah, because Ken's gonna have to figure out the schedule of this stuff, when we need to go through all these zoning bylaw changes, whatever we're talking about. We don't have a lot of time to get all that done and have a public hearing. And give the assigned times by the state laws, and how long, how could we return each one?
Correct. We've got plenty of time.
We're good.
We can get through that pretty much in January, we can start scheduling hearings. We know what we want to change, what we propose anyway.
It's just, and a lot of it's little things, little corrections to make things match.
Yeah, I don't know if, you know, I, we'll discuss it with him and revisit it, but some of the grammatical, some of those things don't need to go to town meeting. If we're trying to match the verbiage to the charts, you know, some of that stuff is just, you know, clerical type errors that can be fixed here without taking it to town.
Oh, I see.
Town meeting. Yeah, we've done that before. It depends on the, on each.
On each article, it depends.
But there wasn't, there wasn't too many, there wasn't too many items, it was the solar.
The events.
Special events. Special events. What else?
That was up from before.
From before, but there was a couple other things too.
Little things.
Little, small things, Joe. Gary.
Hey.
George, are you here to talk to us this evening?
It depends.
Oh.
Best answer I give you.
Okay. Since we've got a little bit of time to kill, we could, if you had a, something you wanted, or whatever.
Just want to feel better.
Okay.
One more time.
Just waiting for, yeah, we've got one before you on the 5:15. Oh, yeah. Hey, Neil. Oh, hey, Neil.
Um, please, I'm, you did the minutes on this last, or we didn't do this one, we put this one down again, so we can have that, you know, I'm just waiting for 5:15. Now, the minutes?
Yep.
Um, you, you probably want to make a motion. Oh, make a motion to review the minutes, like seven minutes, oh, these ones, okay. I make a motion to accept the minutes, I've read, I have it actually.
Oh, you want me to read them first?
Yeah, two minutes. Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're talking, you go.
Okay, yeah, I don't know. Um, I make a motion to accept the minutes, I've read by, these minutes, um, from November, and I said it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I said, I just need one, this, this massive. And two abstains.
Three approved, two abstained. Motion carries.
I'm saying.
It's like watching water boil. What's new, Gary?
I'll go, I'll listen. I wanted to go by quicker, that's all, just the beginning.
Hmm, yeah, well.
I'm not a skier, so it's a skill rule.
You've had your photo of snow already.
What's that?
You've had your photo of snow already.
We're looking so far, let's put it that way, something we can see looking at. It's coming, I think, you guys, it's, snow's coming.
I hope not.
Should move to take a recess.
So, now we only got, three minutes?
Yeah.
They're going to get the stuff that Kathy sent out, except for, um, four of them.
The two letters? Yeah.
I don't know, did she make copies of that? No?
Um, yes, she did, I'm sorry. That's it? Yeah. You got it, right?
Yes.
Did they look at? Did you send? Did you send this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah, I remember.
So, did they, weren't they allowed to go there, and you noticed that there was leaking fluid, or did they disassemble, or I'm just wondering? I'm sorry.
I, I listened to the meeting, they've got concerns about leaking fluids, but, um...
Is that just that one?
Pardon me?
Is that just that one? You can also, like, get the ground tested, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, it's, the whole property isn't up for discussion, the only thing that's up for discussion is where they want to park those additional cars, so...
And you went to the meeting?
No, I listened to it afterwards.
Oh. Oh, okay. Oh, great, okay. That's not till 5:30.
I want to take a minute.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting and have it reconvene at the end of the public hearing.
For both hearings.
Public hearings.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, five, zero, and it is 5:15. We're going to continue the public hearing to consider the petition of Alan Biergard applicant Daniel Darcy, seeking site plan approval under Section 6.3 of the Granby zoning bylaws, and applicable to the section, of Section 3 Regulation 3.5.8 Auto Repair Shop Regarding Existing Business, AJ's Auto Body Site Plan for Proposed Expansion at 39 West State Street, and known as MAP 3D-7-25 in the town of Granby. Okay, so before we get started on that, Lillian has signed off on paperwork that she missed one session regarding Alan Biergard's proposal, or site plan, hearing, and Gary Toth's. So, she signed off stating that she's reviewed the official audio recording and the official video recording. So, she is eligible to vote tonight on both, both hearings.
And then sign that later?
Correct.
So, before we get any further, I want just to state that I've had business with AJ's in the past, but...
Okay. Okay.
So, was the, how long's the time they kept saying there were already parking cars there, and, but we were saying, well, that was new, that's what the expansion part is.
Well, they, they may have been doing it, but now they're trying, now they've...
Now it's like we're noticed, does that happen?
So, so they presented the town with a different site plan, showing them using it.
Okay.
And the Select Board wanted us to approve it before they would issue the new annual license that they issue every year, so... So, we did get a letter back from the planning, the Board of Health, and...
Want me to read it?
Yeah, go ahead, I'll be here to read it. You need it to read, you need it to read it?
Uh, dated December 27th, 2021. Dear Mr. Tromke, I have reviewed my notes regarding the Board of Health meeting, December 21st, 2021. Though not yet accepted by the board, they indicate the following. The board, the board met with Al Biergard of AJ's Auto Body regarding the expansion at 39 West State Street. The board is concerned about how Mr. Biergard will protect the adjacent brook in the soil from leaking fluids from damaged cars. After discussion with Mr. Biergard, the board instructed him to come back to the board with a plan to control those fluids before the board would remove its objection to the approval of the application. Sincerely, Colleen Aberdale, Board of Health Assistant.
Okay. So, I listened, or watched the, the meeting that they had with the Board of Health. Basically, they gave them some ideas of, you know, using Matt's signage, making sure that when cars are being towed in that have been damaged, you know, could be leaking radiator fluid or what have you, that they're placed in a certain area, and there should be signage, and then there was a conversation about reaching out to all the tow, towing companies, and so on and so forth, so...
Why would they need to reach out to all the tow companies? To see what they do?
To, no, to, to assure that they're aware where the parking, the parking of these vehicles should be. It was more of a concern for after hours, I believe.
When no one's there, it's given in drop off.
So, again, they're kind of talking about two different things. The vehicles that are coming in are getting left in the front or off to the right. That's the way they've been doing it right along. Where he's proposing to, to add additional parking is where vehicles are already being, are already in the process of being repaired, or they've already been prepped to be painted. So, for the, in my opinion, for them to be requesting something on the other, on the other part of the site, which has already been, which has already permitted to operate, has nothing to do with...
Didn't say anymore about the other stuff?
So, I, I would normally be in favor to just, to bring this up to a vote and see how the, the, the board feels about it, but I don't think there's any particular rush on this, and if AJ's Auto, Mr. Biergard is going to go back with some sort of a, a, a plan, let's, let's give him till our next meeting, so I, I would, unless there's some other discussion here, I would ask that we make a motion to continue this hearing to our next, our, our next scheduled meeting.
We have one in January 10th coming up.
Well, do you want, I was just going to ask that, do you want to continue it to the 10th or?
Or the 24th?
Yeah, I would continue.
Or the 24th?
No, I would go to the 10th, I would, and then if we have to bump it out again, we'll bump it out again, but if he comes up with some sort of an answer, and that, and the, that satisfies the, the Board of Health, and it won't take long, I don't think we have any other issues with the, the site plan. I'm speaking for the, I'm not speaking for the board, but I don't think, we haven't had any other discussion about it, other than that they...
And they're already parking the cars there, so it's not like it's a new... Well, so long as they keep them, like they say, they're on a white top and out of the grass.
Right. So, but I don't think it's going to hurt to continue it till our next meeting, unless there's an objection.
I wonder when the next Conservation Commission meeting is? Because we still have heard from ConCon.
Yeah, well, if, if we hear something from them before then, fine, but we can't be holding up people because other, I mean, they, they meet once a month.
Yeah.
I mean, that, I don't know how they can, I don't know how they cannot, you know, do business that way, and there's...
They already met according to the agendas that were left here in the last week.
Oh.
13 or something, their agendas are in the trash bucket.
Oh, okay.
So...
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue to, uh, hang on just a minute. What time is the other public hearing?
Can I just ask one question? I know that someone is saying, if I'm here, that people can't just have cars out, I know they've already been doing that, where people can see them when they drive past the 202, they're like working now, and, I mean, shouldn't we actually put some, something up so that they're just not, these, like, junk cars right in the front? I don't know, I know they've already been doing it, so it's kind of a big...
Well, as Mr. Biergard stated two weeks ago, that there are no wrecked cars left out front any longer. It's only, I believe he said employee vehicles and cars that are finished, as you look to the left side of the building, he said, if vehicles that have been reassembled...
Oh, just ready to be painted.
Ready for paint, they may not have the headlights in for masking.
And I'm just reading after the, since those are on the bylaws, but just for the town.
And there, and there we get into a situation with grandfather, and...
Yeah, that's true.
You know?
And typically, that, if I'm not mistaken, and we can get, that use wouldn't be allowed in, in that section of town any longer. It's more of an industrial type use than it is retail. But nonetheless, the frontage is getting shorter and shorter, so, you know, if you were to put up a fence, I mean, it... There'd be nothing left there, that's, that's kind of the problem with the downtown five corners area, there's no, there's no deep frontages, especially where pizza, uh...
And the sidewalks.
Yeah, plus they're pushing them out a little bit, so anyway, let's, I'm in favor of continuing.
But to what time?
Yeah, I don't know what time the other, um, public hearing.
Just go 5:15 a.m., and then, and then the other, the public hearing can come right after at 5:15.
Okay, I don't know if that's been published already.
How about if we go on 5:30, because chances are, if there's only one public hearing as, before this evening, Kathy would have had it at 5:15.
No.
Okay, so...
5:30, so...
January 10th, 2022, at 5:30, to be continued till?
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Five minutes.
I'll, I'll move, we take a five-minute recess.
Uh, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 5:30, December 27th, we're going to reconvene from our, our recess. We have a, continuing a hearing to consider the petition of Gary Toth, applicant owner, seeking site plan approval under Section 6.3 of the Granby zoning bylaws regarding a proposed workshop, storage building approximately 2,870 square feet at 81 Pleasant Street, and known as Assessor's Map 3G-1-2 in the town of Granby, Mass. The zoning district is general business. Okay, we did have a letter here from the Board of Health again? Is that that one? It's because I got it.
Well, a letter from the, to the planning board from the Board of Health, dated December 27th, 2021, regarding 81 Pleasant Street, proposed workshop slash storage building. Dear Mr. Tromke, I have reviewed my notes regarding the Board, the Board of Health meeting, December 21st, 2021. Though not yet accepted by the board, they indicate the following. The Board of Health met with Gary Toth regarding the proposed workshop slash storage building at 81 Pleasant Street. After discussion with Mr. Toth about his intentions for a business at 81 Pleasant Street, the board concluded that it had no concerns with his plans. Sincerely, Colleen Aberdale, Board of Health Assistant.
Okay. So, we reviewed the plans. All the, our biggest concern was where the water was, was, was going to shed to, and Gary was here last, at the last meeting with your architect, showed us how the, how everything's going to flow. Um, I did, I did receive a call from DPW, Dave DeRosa, this week, stating that he just wants to make sure that there's nothing flowing back out onto Pleasant Street from Gary's property. So, I said I would discuss it with the board, we would, we could put a condition on the approval that no water five feet off the apron should, can shed, has to be maintained on the site.
So, no water five feet from the apron?
Five feet, no water should, should, uh, should flow to the street from five feet off the apron. In other words, he's, he's got to slope it up to his lot, right? So, five feet of that...
Okay, I was wondering what apron meant, okay.
So, no water should flow to the street from five, five feet from the apron?
Correct.
Well, no, shouldn't it really say the property should not discharge stormwater to the right of way?
Yeah, because that's five feet of apron, is, is town, town property anyway, so, yeah, that would, that would, that would be good.
In turn, Gary's got something.
You got, see the site, you got, we're doing this, we're doing the bunnies in the, reporting the road, so, we also got gutters in the front, so, shouldn't be much storm.
And that's something, well, this is going to be part of that condition that you and, and/or, or your architect have to discuss with David.
Yeah, I talked to David on the phone, I called him to make sure it was all said, he said, he puts erosion just into the decision-making for the planning board, just for, you know, just for safety, and he said he saw, sent him the plan, he said he saw no concern, as long as we got the swells going to my products. There shouldn't be much storm, or, or, anyway. As long as we got the swells going to my property, so shouldn't be much storm running off anyway to the shit.
So does that show on the plans that we have?
Yes.
So long as we have a set of plans that show all that.
So I didn't know, you were going to say apron, you mean apron off the front of the building?
No, apron off the street, to the, toward, so, Bob kind of corrected me there.
Yeah.
Five feet, an additional five feet is town property anyway.
Yes, off the road, yeah.
Off the road, so.
Of the edge of pavement.
Of the edge of pavement, approximately, that's all.
Everything, everything has to stay on your property.
Right.
And not flow towards the street.
Correct.
Or towards or into the street.
I don't care which way.
It can flow toward the street, provided it's collected before it gets.
Right, you don't want to see a plane.
I don't need to see it.
So, Bob, you're saying, um, the property shall not discharge stormwater into the right of way?
Correct.
Yes. That could be a condition.
Mm-hmm, that should be a condition. Does anybody else have any further discussion about it? No? Any discussion from the public? George?
Thank you, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to say something. Uh, I, I think Gary's worked well with the board, the board backed to him. And I would urge the board to, uh, grant his application, subject to your conditions. Let him, let him get underway, do his, do his business.
Okay, thank you.
I need you to understand that I don't have anything to do with Gary's business. I'm a businessman here at Granby, and I support Granby business. That's why I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I will, well, are you ready for a motion?
Well, you have to close.
Oh, that's right, you got to hear from the general public, and then I'll make a motion to close the hearing to the general public.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, five oh. Okay, any further discussion amongst the board members on this?
Nope.
So I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Toth's project with the condition that we spoke of, uh.
Let me just fill that in with the provision that the property shall not discharge stormwater into the right of way.
At 81 Pleasant Street.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Good to go from this end.
Thank you.
Now, Ken had said at the last meeting that he was going to write up some, uh.
Write up whatever we decide.
Yeah, decisions. So I don't know if that's in there.
I'll, I'll make sure to get that sent.
Yeah, he hasn't written it up yet. Because it's got to have that condition.
It's got to have that condition, that is correct, you're right. Great. You're all set?
All set.
Good luck.
Have a good evening, gentlemen.
Hey, you too, we'll see ya.
Take care.
Watch your step on the way out.
Yeah, we need light out there.
It comes, it's, it might.
What's your closing doors? It's, yeah, it's icy or something. It's not, get a little, someone gets her.
Yeah.
Is there way to get a lighter?
There is a light out there, I just don't know if it's not synced to the correct time.
Have to talk to Jeremy Carrier, right?
Well, okay, talk to Kathy first.
Yeah.
Talk to Kathy.
I'll send Kathy though.
Okay, I don't have anything else on our agenda.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
So quick.
What you just got here.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.